You will have seen that there are lots of places in and around St. Lawrence County that is located in an agricultural district. So this is often the second piece of corresponding information. This is primarily used by town government, but it also can apply if you happen to have a project that's along a village line and it may be proximate to a farm operation. So similar information that you often find on the referral fee or referral sheet, name of the applicant, the name of the property owner, if it were different, the address of the parcel as well as corresponding parcel ID, the type of project, a very brief description of what the project is, and then some critical information that we request of you and that you can use when you're doing deliberations on site plans and special use permits as well as variances, is how this particular project may affect an agricultural operation. Well, how do we know how to answer these types of questions? We can go back to using the IMA, the Development Authority's online mapping program. I'm going to go here, turn off the project referral fee or referral shape file, but then turn on layers for agricultural districts. I'll turn on ag district one and two and then zoom in. You'll see here quite a bit of land outside village limits happens to be located in an agricultural district. But how do we know which one it is? I'm just going to go out here, out on the Finnegan Road, and I'll click here. Gives me parcel data, but then I also want to see, I'm going to scroll up just a little bit, it's a district number two, and that can help. Let me turn off this data file so that I can scroll in just a little bit. Some of the additional information that would need to be completed in the ag data statement include, is the parcel being used as farmland or part of a farm? You can get that using satellite imagery based on a discussion with the property owner? Are prime soils present? How can we figure that out? That is readily available in this agricultural atlas. So in addition to finding out whether or not if it's in an ag district, there's also a soils layer here called prime farmland. And if you turn it on, you have what looks like a camouflage design turn on. The dark green indicates that all areas are prime. Light green indicate property here, but if we were to look at this, prime if it were tile drained. So it gives you exactly what is available in the NRCS, the Natural Resources Conservation Service Soil Survey. It also offers some other information that is very useful. So the name of the soil, Malone, flooding frequency, none, ponding frequency, zero to 14%, somewhat poorly drained. Here is the soil class, type three. It is not considered a hydroric soil. It has a slope that extends from a minimum of 3% to a high slope of as much as 8%. And then lastly, in the lightest color here, is not prime or prime if it were drained, but it is farmland of statewide importance and similar information there. And so that can be filled out based on the information that is available on the online mapping program. Now, whether or not a parcel receives an agricultural exemption, that's a question that you can ask your municipal assessor. They will know. And in order to qualify for an agricultural exemption, the farm operator has to do two things. They have to have at least seven acres in production and they have to gross at least $10,000 in sales receipts annually, and that is recertified on an annual basis. So your local assessor will know, the property owner or the farm operator will certainly know, and they can provide that information. Has this been tile drained? That's a question that you can also ask the farm operator or the property owner. And then lastly here is, who are the farm operators in the vicinity of the project? How are we going to figure this out? Online mapping programs can do it again. And this is a very nice trick that I'd like to share with you because I think it can help you with your legal notice requirements as you're doing project reviews. So I'm going to click randomly just on this particular parcel. I'm going to take the parcel ID and copy it, and then I'm going to head over here to do a search. It's going to give me Dennis A's, and I'm going to select it, and it's turned it blue. When you were down here, there is a drop down menu of different types of layers that you want to target. I want to target the parcels layer. I'm next going to ask, I want to show what's within 200 feet of this particular lot. You see that there? And then I'm going to hit the crosshairs. It creates a 200 foot buffer. It highlights all the parcels that are within 200 feet of the outer limits of this area. And then it shows me the property owner information and contact information. You can export this information. I'm just going to say 200 feet for a quick save, and then I'm going to say export. Do you want to save it? Okay. I'll save it to my desktop. I'm going to open it up. And I might have to stop sharing on this screen and then show you a different screen in just a moment. But what you will see, there's a problem opening it. I'm going to stop sharing. I'm going to go to a new screen and show you my Excel file. And with the help of your municipal clerk, hopefully this will populate. With the help of your municipal clerk, you'll be able to do mailing labels. I'm trying to see what I'm doing. I'm going to try resharing again. I apologize. There we go. There it is. So you've got primary ownership name, parcel ID, locator street, Canton, New York, and the zip. There's some other information here in the columns that you can delete that you're liking because they're giving you all of the real property data available. But this is really a convenient way for you to satisfy your legal notice requirements by asking the municipal clerk to create mailing labels with the use of this spreadsheet in Microsoft Word. Okay? So that's how you can find out who's within 200 feet, 500 feet, so on and so forth. So I'll go back to my screen here. So that takes care of the agricultural data statement, and I'm going to go back into the newsletter to talk about what happened after you turn these types of documents into our office. What we like to recommend to planning boards as well as zoning boards of appeal is that as soon as an applicant comes to you and says, hey, I need an area variance or I need to file a site plan or request a special use permit, that you say, okay, whatever documents that you're submitting to me for our local board, we need to provide a duplicate set to the county planning office so that we are all on the same page and that we can make informed decisions on what you're asking for. There are two courses of action that often come out of the project referral process. Oftentimes, most projects, most projects are small in scale, meaning that they'll have a nominal impact only in your particular community and not present any county-wide impacts. And oftentimes, Jason, Dakota, and I will return those projects to you within 48 to 72 hours saying, yes, we see you have a five yard, five foot side yard area variance request so that the shed can be closer to the lot line than is allowed. We don't see any county-wide significance with that. We'll send it back to you so that your local board can take final action. But there are some other projects that may present county-wide impacts, and they often tend to be big in scale. And these are just examples that we typically have that, that say these are automatically going to be placed on the county planning board agenda. They are any commercial project in excess of 5,000 square feet, structures greater than 10,000 square feet, projects that are large in size and scope. Think about big box retail or solar array systems, commercial rezoning of parcels, the repurposing of contaminated sites, any alterations to a significant view shed, think about scenic byways and/or along the St. Lawrence River. And then lastly, any type one action under seeker. So if it's going to require a full-blown environmental assessment form, it probably will be added to the county planning board, full board agenda. And so those are often held. And what typically happens is that we're going to ask for the full 30 days if necessary to do a complete and thorough review of the project so that the staff report can be prepared, presented, the planning board deliberate, and we provide you with the notice of action. And often, there are three results that will come out of that. The project will get approved as it's proposed. The project will get approved with conditions, meaning that the applicant may have to make some revisions in order to be, in order to move forward, or the project is denied. In those instances, your local board can concur with the county planning board, or you can overrule the county planning board's decision. But you can only do that with what's called a super majority vote. That is the majority plus one of the full membership of your board. So simple majority is only required for approvals if you confer with the county planning board as its condition. You can do a simple denial, a denial with a simple majority, but in instances when you need to override county planning board decisions, it's a majority plus one of your membership. And then once you've made that decision, we ask that you provide us with some follow-up documentation so that we can keep that as a part of the project review record. And so what you see here in highlights are ag data, excuse me, the project referral form, you can cut and paste that into an internet browser. Other helpful documents that we have used, I have already highlighted the benefits of the internet mapping application. But then I also want to show you some great tools that we have found available to us, and that is both through Bing and through Google Maps. And that is listed in your newsletter. So what I'm going to do here in the top right corner is turn on what is called street side. And it's going to highlight the local roads that have been driven either by Microsoft or by Google with their really interesting roadside cameras. You drag the little guy over and it's going to give you 360 degree view of what's in that vicinity at the time that the road was driven. These can be, these screenshots can be saved. You can save, take a picture of the screenshot using a snip tool, saving it to the project review file in instances when you cannot go out and do a site visit. We regularly use street side imagery and include them in the project reviews that are prepared for the county planning board. So a really great asset to have in the event that you're unable to go out and take a look and do a field visit for yourself. All right. So I think I've covered the newsletter. Jason or Dakota, would you like to add anything before I move on to planning board handout?
I don't. Matilda, I think that was really comprehensive. Thanks very much for putting that together. I think that's, that's something that really helpful for all the, hopefully all the participants. I will note that in the chat box, there is a link to all these materials. It's the first, the first entry into the chat box. So I think we emailed them to you as well, but if you missed that, you can get it from the chat box as well, everything that we'll be talking about tonight. So thanks, Matilda.
You're welcome. All right. So then, folks, I'm going to move on to the site plan review handout. Now, this is a model handout that was prepared by the New York State Department of State to help local boards create a timeline checklist of making sure you follow town law and/or village law when it comes to site plan review or special use permits. It was created by Department of State. I simply downloaded it from the webpage and I thought it would be useful to review with you. So in this particular location, at the very top of the checklist, they ask you to list the section, the tax parcel number. We usually call that the parcel ID that has all the numbers with the dots and the dashes, including the project name as well as the applicant's name and address. For code officials and chairs, the date that the application has been filed and the fee has been paid, you can list that here. This is known as your application completeness date. And what you're going to need to do in the event that you need to hold a public hearing, your public hearing will need to be held within 62 days of the application completeness date. Now, site plan review projects don't automatically require a public hearing. Special use permits do. So at the discretion of your local planning board, if a project seems to be controversial, you can schedule a public hearing for site plan review project. So you can list that down here that you've received it, the date that you sent the same application to the county planning office, that begins the 30 day clock for us to get back to you in terms of what decision has been made. You can also provide similar information to other agencies. They include Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Conservation. Those are probably the two biggest agencies that we've been involved with, especially if it involves stormwater pollution prevention plans, mining permits, and depending on where you are in St. Lawrence County, you may also need to do referrals to the Adirondack Park Agency. So that's when you can list that here. Now, in instances when you decide to hold a public hearing, at one of your regular meetings, you pass a resolution to set the date for the public hearing. Then you create your legal notice, which is published in your official newspaper. That is the bare minimum that is required for legal notice under town law. There are some other best practices that you can incorporate to help inform your constituents. They include publishing or posting the legal notice in your municipal building, providing a copy of the legal notice to the applicant as well as adjacent property owners. And it varies from one community to the next about what the legal notice requirements are. Sometimes it's just the adjacent neighbors. Sometimes it's within 100 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet. And so going to the Development Authority's mapping program to download an Excel spreadsheet of all those locations within a certain buffer, that can help you get the word out. So further down on this list, you identify when was the public hearing opened? Did you have to continue it for a controversial project? And the date that it was closed? The only one instance that I can think of off the top of my head where there was a continuance at the local level was with the town of Pottstown and the review for the Walmart project. You may remember 15 years ago or so how controversial that was, and it couldn't, the public hearing comments could not be held in just one particular night. I actually had to do a continuance to allow everyone to provide their input on whether or not the project should be approved. So the dates that you open and close your hearing, the dates that you make your determination. And we often recommend that you not make your determination until after you have heard from the county planning board. We have heard in past practice, though it isn't often used now, that, that local boards have said, we approve as proposed contingent on county planning board review. That's like putting the cart before the horse because you will need to re-hear and re-review the project if you've taken that step, which only delays at the local level your ability to move forward on the project. So resolution addressing county planning agency comments and conditions, that can happen the same night that you make your determination so long as you've heard back from us. And then other dates that would follow, the decision mailed to the applicant and filed with the clerk. It says here that the zoning permit, the date that the zoning permit is issued, that's often the building permit and/or the certificate of occupancy as was to by your coast enforcement officer. All right. So that's a pretty long list. Here's what, what the review process looks like in a flow chart. And there are some communities that do what's called a pre-application submission, but this one just has the date of the filing. You'll see here that there's 62 days between the filing date and scheduling the hearing, a simultaneous referral to the county planning board that's turned around within 30 days so that you have sufficient time to hold, to get the public comments that you need. Your planning board takes action, and the actions are as follows. You approve, you approve with conditions, or you disapprove. And in instances where you have imposed conditions of approval, they are satisfied on the site plan so that the code enforcement officer can issue the building permit. All right? So that's the flow chart. This is a checklist for how local boards can do their site plan reviews to make sure that, that the site plan and the information that has been submitted can help you make an informed decision. This comes from Clearfield City in Utah. It was a very quick research project that I did earlier this week, but I thought it captured a lot of the important elements that we often look for in our office on making sure that the site plan provided to us is sufficient. And if it isn't sufficient, then we often reach out to the applicant and/or their agent for additional information. I'm going to zoom in just a little bit here, just to see what some of these elements are. So the site plan has been reviewed. It provides some specific information and you can say yes, no, provide additional comments. So does it provide you with the information that you need on the site plan? Does it satisfy your landscaping requirements? Do you have the soils information that you need? What about vehicular access? Will there be a curb cut requirement permit from either county highway or the DOT field office in Pottstown? Will there be an extension to the sidewalks? Where are you going to put your dumpsters? Where will you have snow storage? What's the lighting going to look like? Is the existing water and sewer service in your community able to take on a new project? And if not, what improvements are required? What about your stormwater runoff? If there is a project that disturbs more than one acre, they will need to file what's called a stormwater management plan with the DDC. And you can ask for a complimentary copy of that during your deliberation. Are there elevations that have been submitted to you to review what the building is going to look like when it's finished? What's the grading going to look like when the project is done? How much is the project going to cost? And are they going to comply with these standards? This is how you can help populate the checklist. You're one of two ways. In communities where you see zoning, most zoning documents include what is called a schedule. I copied and pasted this from the town of Madrid, and it shows you the types of uses that are allowed in their commercial business district, uses that are allowed by rights, uses that are subject to site plan review, uses that require a special use permit, and then all the dimensional requirements that each of these uses need to satisfy. So you can take a zoning schedule like this, if your community has zoning, line it up with the site plan that's been submitted to you and go through the checklist. Does it satisfy all the requirements in order to take action? Or do, does the, does the site plan need to be revised? Or is the site plan so crazy that it shouldn't be approved as proposed? In communities where you don't have zoning, this, there is another way to satisfy the checklist that I reviewed earlier. Without dimensional standards, there are some other standards that can continue to be considered. And this comes from the town of Lawrence where they don't have zoning, but site plan review regulations in effect. And the biggest, the most important principal issues that the town of Lawrence Planning Board looks at when they're reviewing site plans are, are we protecting the health and safety of the community? Is it that as long as the project is proposed and approved, is it going to lead to any dangers that can lead from fire, flooding, other causes, anything that could help affect the health and safety of the community? Does it preserve the town's character? Is the project going to be visually compatible? And can everything cohabitate in harmony? Is there sufficient separation of incompatible uses from one another? Is there any vegetated screening proposed such as buffering or earthworms? What about commercial and industrial uses for residential properties? Are those types of uses separated? Are any other types of uses that could have an impact on other nearby existing uses as well? Other specific standards that exist in Lawrence include, does the project proposal satisfy all of other existing laws in our community? Is it also consistent with any county or state law? Then it goes down into traffic issues to consider. Is it going to provide for safe and convenient and efficient movement on the site? Is it going to be accessible during all months of the year with particular emphasis on emergency vehicles being able to get on and off the property? Is there an onsite driveway grade? Will, that there be no more than two access points? And in cases where you have a corner lot or a double frontage lot, that the principal access be off the secondary road and so on and so forth? So that checklist can be satisfied by looking at the narrative in your site plan review regulations. Additional information here deals with the parking that is dependent on the type of use, the kinds of services that may be required. And that would be, do we have the infrastructure in place, whether it be the lighting district, the water and sewer district? Do what we currently have, can it reasonably accommodate the new and proposed needs? What about emergency services such as our police and fire departments or EMTs? Are there issues that we will need to pay particularly close attention to? Do we need to consult with the highway superintendent or DPW crew to talk about what sort of impacts that we make, that the municipality will be responsible for? Drainage is another important issue that we find here in the North Country, especially when it comes to snowmelt and/or heavy rain events. Any new use that has a lot of blacktop, we need to pay close attention to the elevation contours and where the storm and where the snow storage will be located so that when it's melting off in the spring, it doesn't result in ponding onto adjacent property owners. Now, with regards to water and sewer, I want to go back to the online mapping program and use this as an important example for planning boards to take a look at. If you do not have a water and sewer district in your community and you're looking at a new convenience store, a new restaurant, another type of use that will likely deal with a lot of water demand and/or wastewater production, you want to pay close attention to the types of soils that exist and whether or not the property, the soils on that property can readily accommodate a septic system. And here's what we're going to do. Here in the aerial imagery, I'm going to go back to the ag atlas. I'm going to turn on the prime farmland description. And we're going to take a look. And we're gonna take a look at, let's say, this dark green block here. And it tells me. That we have KAV soils here, K-A-V. I'm gonna copy that. And I'm gonna go. To what I call, I ran a query for the county's soil survey for New York. And I'm gonna stop my screen and sh- and share a new screen. That shows you this huge encyclopedia of information that I think is very important for every planning board to have in their community. So let me pull this up and I'll switch my screen sharing here with you. Give me a moment. Let's see here. Change my screen sharing. This is what the cover page of the soil survey looks like. I'm gonna use the command F, which is the find, so it's control F. And I'm gonna paste in K-A-V. And it shows me where K-A-V is in the table of contents. I'm gonna keep hitting next until it actually gets me to the description. And I'm gonna zoom in here. Every soil type in St. Lawrence County has just about a two-page description. Of its production capacity. Lots of information here that farm operators really appreciate. And it was put together by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Usually, the bottom two paragraphs for every soil description will tell you how it will handle development. And we often cut and paste this information for your local boards. Here's what I want you to pay attention to. K-A-V soils, just as an example. It says here, it has a seasonal high water table. And it's a main limitation for a site with a basement. And so you should install drains by the footings to help reduce wetness. You should also adequately seal the foundation to prevent wet basement. Additional information, if you were doing a subdivision, for example. There's a potential for frost action and it's the main limitation for constructing roads and streets. And so the recommendation is providing coarser grain subgrade to help deal with frost action use. Most importantly for septic systems. It says here, the seasonal high water table and the slow permeability of the substratum. Are the main limitations for a conventional septic tank system. And you're gonna have to do some engineering around the filter field to help reduce wetness. And enlarge the absorption field and place a wide deep trench below the distribution lines. To help compensate for slow permeability. Every description for a soil type in the county has this kind of information for municipal planning boards to take a look at. So it's a very useful tool for you when completing the checklist. Uh, to see that it can read, that the area can readily accommodate the proposed development. Alright, so I'm gonna stop sharing this particular screen and go back to the handout. Are there any, uh, Jason, are there any particular questions that have come up or should I continue?
Matilda, I'd say keep going. I don't see anything in the chat box, uh, yet, but, uh, just a reminder to anyone, if you do have questions. Please just, uh, put them in the chat box and we'll get to them.
Alright, alright, so if everyone's good. I'm gonna share with next. A sample site plan that was recently reviewed by the county planning board. This is a project that was reviewed earlier in the summer. It's located in the village of Messina. And it was a site plan filed to add an additional driveway. At Tim Horton's because of the amount of drive-through congestion that they were experiencing. And so it wasn't a review of the existing use. But to add an accessory component to the existing business. And so this is the area of the site plan that we were taking a look at earlier in the summer. And so what you see here is the dotted line of the property boundary. Some existing landscaping that will remain intact. The name of the property owner. Uh, the fact that there were some downcast dark sky compliant lighting put in. The width of the driveway with a comment that they would obtain necessary permits from either New York State DOT or the village. The installation of particular signs. The striping to direct traffic. It delineated areas for snow storage. As well as satisfying applicable setbacks. And they did note here. On the site plan, the type of zone. The applicable front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and rear yard setbacks. So this was actually quite, uh, concise and thorough. There were a couple of elements that were missing, namely a north arrow, but we were able to figure that out looking at aerial imagery. Uh, we did note who the adjacent property owners were. Uh, we did note the extension of a privacy fence for, um, buffering purposes. Uh, and how, um, how the project would flow, how traffic would move in and out of the area. When we took a look at this particular project, it was approved with a condition of approval. So this goes back to the previous discussion about. Do we return projects for local action? Or does the county planning board impose a condition when there is a perceived county-wide impact? And the county-wide impact was this. Because it was a separate lot with a different deed description that would be adjacent to the principal use. What the county wanted to avoid happening was this particular lot, this new lot snapping off and being resold separately. Because this element has been identified. As an important solution to some traffic congestion, uh, as a result of how successful this business has been. And so the condition was this. Tie the parcels together, rewrite the deed description so that the parcels could never be detached and separated from one another. This helps avoid instances where, uh, property owners will say, well, I'll pay the re- uh, real estate tax here. But I'm not gonna pay the real estate tax there. Uh, it puts, uh, local government and the county government in a very difficult position of figuring out. Well, how are we gonna take this parcel when we know it's primarily attached to this principal use? So that's the example of a site plan that we reviewed that we found to be pretty thorough. And is a good example for how you can satisfy, uh, the checklist when applying the zoning schedule. Or your site plan review regulations for your community. Alright? Okay, so if everyone is comfortable. I am now gonna move on to the zoning boards of appeals handout. Very similar to what you see for site plan review. Um, it identifies date of filing. When the environmental assessment form was submitted. The kind of action that you think it will be. And I neglected to talk about this earlier, but I'm happy to talk about it now. Type one actions under SEACER, these are the big projects. Uh, think bridge construction, think interstate construction. These are automatic full EAS. Type twos are those types of projects that are exempt from SEACER. These are, uh, a co- a common exemption is area variances for one-family homes, two-family homes, and three-family homes. Those are exempt. Unlisted is everything in between. So most often the projects that you are going to see are going to be unlisted. Unless it's being specifically identified as an area variance for one, two, or three family homes. Alright? So the date that the application is filed, uh, this triggers your sixty-two calendar date for when you schedule your public hearing. We recommend that as soon as you accept a local filing, that you also grab a second copy for our offices and send it our way. Give us the thirty days that we will need to send it back to you, though we often take care of it in a much shorter duration. Uh, whether or not you need to consult with any other, uh, state agencies. The date that you receive the county planning board response. Uh, the date of the resolution when you scheduled your hearing. The date that you sent it out, uh, the legal notice to the applicant as well as publishing the paper. When you opened your public hearing, the date that you closed it. And the type of action that you took. And you'll see here that there is a little bit of difference here. Um, with zoning boards of appeal. They can do a couple of different things. They can grant a variance, grant it with conditions. They also hear what are called interpretations. And these are often disagreements between the code official and the applicant. On how you interpret the definition. And so zoning boards of appeal have the authority to, to consider those requests. So you can take an approval. You can also disapprove. You've denied the, denied the appeal. The date that you made the resolution, uh, addressing county planning office, county planning board concern. And when you sent that information back. It does continue on to a second page that talks about when you filed your decision, when you issued your building permit, as well as the certificate of occupancy. So A to B or A to Z on, on the timeline. Farther below. Our model applications prepared by the Department of State. For, for residents in your community when filing for a D variance. This is readily available for any county you, uh, throughout the state. Uh, the variance process begins when the code enforcement officer. Cannot issue a building permit for a project because it's not consistent with local land use regulations. So, they denial the issuance of a building permit. Or they deny the application for a certificate of occupancy. That triggers the variance request. So here, here's the applicant's appeal and it, we ask the applicant to fill out what is the proposed activity. The code enforcement officer or the, the chair of the zoning board of appeals. Lists where in your code the denial was made, where is the regulation? So you enter that citation in, the date of the decision. And then, uh, for the applicant to state, what type of use variance are you asking for? Are you looking to put a commercial use in the residential district? If that's, if that's the case, then you should state that. Now, when zoning boards of appeal are considering these types of projects for use variances. They have to affirm in every four, in, in, in each of the four legal tests that we state here. Um, and, and this particular application puts the burden of proof on the applicant to provide this information to you. So, the applicant needs to explain that they cannot realize a reasonable return for any other permitted use in, in this particular district. And they should provide the zoning board of appeals with some evidence of that. So the applicant must list this. They also need to explain why the hardship is unique. How is it different from everybody else in that particular district? Uh, they also need to explain if the variance was granted. Uh, will it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? If not, explain how it won't. Making sure that it is compatible and in harmony and it doesn't affect the public health and safety of the, of the surrounding community. And then for the applicant to explain, did they create their own hardship? Uh, and they'll explain how this isn't something that they did on their own. There are extenuous circumstances that, that warrant. That they've been granted some form of relief. Now, what happens after your public hearing has closed? As part of your minute, the zoning board of appeals should review the applicant's responses. And then also state their opinion. Because this will form the basis of your use variance decision. This helps substantiate for the record why you ruled the way you did. And it helps protect you from any Article seventy-eight proceedings. If an applicant or an aggrieved neighbor says, I don't like the way this came out. So that protects you as the zoning board of appeals when you review each of these questions and gr- and render your own opinion. So you answer these questions for yourself after reviewing the applicant's statements. Uh, uh, which led, leads to supporting their decision. For area variances, the Department of State has also provided a model application that can also be used. Similar information here. Uh, parcel ID, the name of the zoning district. Uh, the date that the applicant purchased the property. Uh, and whether or not the denial is based on issuing, not issuing a building permit or the certificate of occupancy. They're listing what the proposed activity is. Uh, the section in your code, why the, explaining why the denial was made. The date of the decision. And then the applicant is asked to state what type and size of variance is being asked. Is it three feet? Is it ten foot? Is it the front yard? Is it the side yard, rear yard, et cetera? Is it smaller than the minimum lot size required? Uh, so on and so forth. The reason why you're applying for it. And what the existing character of your neighborhood is like. Uh, Jason Dakota and I talked about this particular application and, uh, both Dakota and Jason came up with really good suggestion. And that would be adding a page two to this form, which didn't exist. We put this together, uh, just earlier yesterday. And that is making sure that the applicant answers the five considerations that are needed for area variances. So, the applicant will need to explain. That granting the variance won't create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, but the benefit can't be achieved some other way. There, there has to be another way. If not, that, that's the only reason why they're requesting the area variant. Um, but the area variance is not substantial. Yeah, are they only asking for eighteen inches, two feet, four feet, five feet? Uh, substantial is a, uh, subjective terminology that is answered by the zoning board of appeals on this particular issue. Uh, whether or not the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or an impact on the surrounding neighborhood or on the physical or environmental conditions. And then lastly, unlike the use variance. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, and this is not a deal breaker, but it is a consideration. For the zoning board to pay attention to. Alright, so I've come to the end of that handout. Are there any questions that, uh, the audience may have?
Matilda.
Yeah?
Just before we, we get to questions, I just wanna reiterate one thing, um, with regard to the, the, the tests for variances.
Yeah.
The use variance i- is, uh, is really, should be really difficult to get. We have seen over the years a number of use variances that are just sort of seen as, uh, oh, well, there, there's no other way to do it, so we'll grant a use variance. Use variances really fly in the face of, uh, of sound planning of what's in your, your local codes. Uh, not that they should never be granted, but they should be really granted cautiously. And just a, a reminder that it, it's not one of the four questions here that, that have to be met. It's all four. Uh, even three out of the four is, i- is not, uh, not allowed for, for granting. They really need to show, uh, to you, to the zoning board, that they have met all four legal tests. And, uh, we just wanna to, to reiterate that because that. If, you know, if you do take action and there is some opposition to, uh, to, uh, the granting of a variance. Uh, and not going through the, the, all the legal tests appropriately could, um, land, uh, the municipalities in a little bit of hot water. Uh, and that's why Matilda was, uh, was really comprehensive about making sure you have records here and, and have, uh. Uh, a, um, an understanding of what those legal tests are and, and having the applicant to submit, uh, really good responses to them. That'll, that'll really, uh, help you in the long run. So just wanted to, uh, to reiterate that. Uh, I don't see any, um. Any comments or questions in the chat box here, so I will unmute people if, uh. So I will unmute people if, if, unmute everybody and we'll see, see how it works for other questions. But Matilda, do you want to speak to this last, this last sheet first?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. While I was collecting the exhibits on the Department of State's website for tonight's presentation, I also found the following flyer of some upcoming land use training sessions that are available. We already had one come and go on the 8th, but there is one coming up on floodplain regulation on the 15th. Skills that make great board members on the 22nd. And then a couple more at the beginning of the New Year. A planning board overview and then a DBA overview. And so if you are interested in registering to attend, we're happy to provide you with a copy of this flyer. But you should be able to access it from the link that Jason shared with you at the beginning of tonight's presentation. Lastly, they included at the bottom of the flyer, some additional training information that is available. And I do know that you should have received a web link from us of recorded training sessions that you could also access to satisfy your four-hour training requirement.
Thanks, Matilda. I, I've, I've heard good things about the, the session that was held. Was it the, just two, last night or two nights ago on the, on subdivisions? So I think that, that these sessions are pretty good. I do have a question in the chat box here that I'll just read out and we'll look to answer it. The question is, if a municipality does not forward a, an eligible project for review onto the county planning board, could there be any ramifications of this lack of action to the local board and municipality? That's, that's a good question. That may be, may be of interest to, to a lot of board members here. And yeah, there, there, Matilda, I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at it and then you can compliment my answer. And if you would, that'd be great. So yeah, there are, there are ramifications. Certainly, if, if referrals are not sent to the county planning board, there, there could be grounds for some, some legal action. Oftentimes, courts will require municipalities to go back and, and to hear it, to rehear it. There is no, there is no statute of limitations on these things. So if, it, it could be, you know, years later that, that an issue comes up that, that will require the municipality going back and, and taking action and, and doing the review process as necessary.
Right. It's as if your local decision had never happened under general municipal law. It's invalidated without county planning board review and an MOU or a return letter being sent to you.
Okay, another question. Thanks, Matilda. That's great. Another question here. Are the trainings all on Zoom? And I think, is that, I think the question is referring to the state trainings. And I'm not sure, Matilda, if they are on Zoom or some other platform. Do you know?
I suspect that, I know other state agencies use, have been directed to use WebEx. And so you may be required to use either WebEx or GoToMeeting. I think they have been, those are the vendors that the state has relied on in the past and continues to do so. So I'm not sure if they're with Zoom or not. I suspect they're with the other vendors.
Thanks, Matilda. Okay.
I can confirm that if you want, Jason. I just looked, I signed up for one of those. So it is WebEx.
Thanks, Robin. Could you just reiterate that? They are on WebEx?
They are on WebEx. And it's similar to Zoom. It may have to download a, a little program. But I've used it before. It's not, not magic or evil. Well, any more evil than anything else on the web, but.
Great. Thanks, Robin. Appreciate that.
This is Ann Townsend. I took, I took the, I, I listened to the webinar yesterday. And they gave us a link and it was very quick to get on. I didn't have to download anything. So just wanted to throw that in.
Super. Thanks, Ann. That, that's good to hear. Okay. Any, any other questions here? We don't want to, we're a little over our time, but we don't want to cut anybody off if there, if there are other questions.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Great, thanks. If not, I do really want to thank Matilda tonight. It was a really comprehensive presentation. When we were talking about it in the office here, I'm going, boy, how are you going to squeeze that into an hour, Matilda? That's, that's lots of material, but she was really, really comprehensive and did a great job. So thank you again, Matilda. That's.
No problem. If, if any of you have any follow-up questions that you can think of, feel free to give us a call, send us an email. We're happy to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
And we will look for additional training opportunities. You know, we've typically done them in spring and fall. This will be our fall session. We'll look to do something in the spring. I'm, I'm kind of thinking we're going to be back in, on this platform. I, I always prefer in-person, but, but right now, this is, this is what we have. So we'll, we'll do the same sort of rollout and, and look for, for different training topics as well. If there is something specific that someone does have that they would like to see more in-depth training on, please, again, shoot us an email, give us a call. We're happy to accommodate any of those requests.
Can I just ask you one quick question? Did you say earlier on that we need to type out our names in the chat box?
Yes, and if, if, thanks for the reminder. If, if you could, if, if you haven't yet done so, please just type your name into the chat box. And that just gives us the record that you're, that you've been attending the, the training here. And we will get you a certificate to, to show that you, you did participate in this training.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, everybody. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Good to see you.
Happy Christmas.
Thank you, Matilda.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye now.
Michael, come here. I think we're just about done.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. What are you trying to do?
Well, I think we got to get out of it.
Yeah, quickly.
Over here?
No.
Where?
It's on the screen. Like, go up on the screen. Leave in the bottom, right?
Oh, okay. That's it?
You want to take the puppy outside?